Welcome to another meeting of the Lorraine County Commissioners broadcast exclusively on your Lorraine County Community College Education Station. The Lorraine County Commissioners urgently invite you to see the meetings live and in person every Thursday morning. The meetings are located in the Lorraine County Administration Building located at 226 Middle Avenue in downtown Alariah. The meetings start at 9:30 a.m. on most weeks. Now, enjoy the meeting.
(inaudible) A pledge to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes. We almost had a solo there. Good morning and welcome to the 13th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners for the year 2001. The thought I would like to offer for today is real communication mandates pauses to let the other party get a word in edgewise. My hearing clears when I remember, one mouth, two ears. I think before we begin Commissioner Basie has some guests that she would like to introduce.
Yeah, I'd like to recognize the children and the teachers that are with us today and they're from Community Youth Academy School. And we have some shadows up here this morning and I would appreciate if we start with Stefan. And Stefan, would you please stand and give your name from here?
My name is Stefan Washington.
My name is Ted Burns.
My name is Charlotte Thorpe.
My name is Simone Thomas.
I want to thank them for being with us. I went to their school yesterday and we had a mock annexation. Boy, we had a blast. Every one of them was either an attorney, a businessman, a township trustee, a county commissioner, a mayor, so we just filled the room. Thanks again. Did they annex? Of course. The law wouldn't allow them to do anything else.
Thank you Commissioner Basie. Also, I just want to make known that April is Child Abuse Awareness Month and the Lorraine County Children's Services Department is passing out little blue pins like so that we can wear to recognize our precious resources in children and how they need to be treated. So if any of you would like one of these, please see any of the people here and we'll see that you get one. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
At 10:30, there will be the first to second public hearings on the State of Ohio Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Programs available for FY 2001. And 11 o'clock, Mary Lugolsky, Director of Lorraine County Job and Families, will make a presentation on Public Assistance Trends. Under Resolutions, Job and Family Services Bills.
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
How would you vote? Would you want to pay those bills? Do you want to pay the Human Service bills? That's for poor people, don't you think? We vote yes.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye, with the exception of the $90,000 with season good mayor. So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Basie?
Aye, with the exception of the $485,000 for the...I'm not sure what that was. I didn't have a copy of it with me. I believe it was an economic adjustment.
For the only one?
I think it was the only one for $485,000, so whatever that was.
Ms. Blair?
Aye, with no exceptions.
Mr. Moore?
Aye, with no exceptions.
There are no advances. Requisitions?
So moved.
Discussion.
Yeah, I had an exception on 10:34:01, a Dodge Dakota we were purchasing. Mr. Cordez?
Thank you Commissioner. That Dodge Dakota is to replace the vehicle that was destroyed in the accident out at the Dog Pound about three or four weeks ago. We ordered the Dakota off the state purchasing list and our racks and top will fit onto the new truck, thus saving us having to have that expense again. We have three dog wardens and we only have two trucks. We absolutely have to have this truck. Is there anything else I can add? Okay, thank you sir.
I have some questions on 200...I'm sorry, 1002, 3, 4, 5, and 7. Those are blanket purchase orders for the telecommunication telephone system.
Okay.
We just had a new system we paid thousands and thousands of dollars for. Why do we need these blanket orders?
The blanket orders are for parts. We put phones in offices, the speed dialers, new handsets. We repair them. I know they're new, but we still do work on them. Then we need jacks, cables, the various components when we were installing equipment around the building. I think those POs for under 500 a piece are...
No, they're totaled $6,000 for a new system. That just seemed kind of high.
Right. I can have Ms. Bryant give us a list of the things we used last quarter. We can take a look at that and see how it compares to what we need to buy this quarter. But I don't think there's a lot of expenditure going on as far as repairs on the system as much as it's people wanting new phones and new equipment and moving phones and moving equipment. That's what they do a lot of. And we have a lot of other systems that aren't new. We have some small key touch keypad in different buildings such as the Hazel Webber Building. The county engineer's phone system is different. I believe the county engineer's phone system is different. So we have to maintain those systems also. And we have different phones out at the Gates Building too.
Okay, I understand that this money is not used unless it's necessary.
That's correct Commissioner. Ms. Blair?
Would you check on that, why those POs are so high for just three months?
I'll get a letter of justification.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
There's only one, there's one for $5,000. The rest of them are in the 500 range.
Correct.
Madam Clerk, we call the roll please.
Blair?
Aye, with no exceptions.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Bills?
Would you like to pay bills today?
So moved.
Yes. Second.
Discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
How do you vote to pay bills? Do you vote to pay bills?
Yes.
We vote yes.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary for employees within the jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Was it the pleasure of the board to have an executive session?
Yes, I would love to have an executive session.
Commissioner Moore?
I'm fine without one.
There's an increase in someone's wages, our administrator's wages, that I would like to discuss because I believe it's rather high. We had an administrator for 18 years and he never received this kind of money. And I'd like some justification for why this is requested.
Well, apparently we're going to discuss it right now then.
Let's do it.
For the benefit of the audience, we have a Personnel Action Summary Sheet. It has four items listed on it and the first, are we going to discuss all these then?
I don't know.
My main concern is that one.
Okay, well that's item number two. It says James Cordez, County Administrator, Pay Increase From $34.61 per hour to $42.55, Pay Grade C8 Effective April 16, '01. Do we...you want to speak to the issue, want Mr. Vote, or how would you like to handle it Commissioner?
I mean, I look at it this way. We now have 19 departments with over 650 employees with a budget of $275 million a Traditionally, the compensation didn't seem appropriate for the responsibilities that we've done in the last 90 days. We've streamlined the government. This is part of my, what I call my three Es, which is efficiency, effectiveness, and economically feasible. And this is just something that kind of ties in with the plan that I've been trying to do with bringing accountability back to government, so...
I disagree. I believe the county's been running effectively over the last century here. So I mean, I don't see where that could be a reason to increase someone's pay to 23% increase.
I mean, just looking at one department that I've seen, I can probably cut another $90,000 out of salaries. And this is the next step that I'll be looking at is the 19 departments and where we can make more cuts to make it more effective, efficient, and economically feasible.
You're talking about cutting employees' wages in other departments?
No, I'm looking at making government a little bit more efficient and accountable.
Well, how does this make government more efficient?
With the added responsibilities that he's had in the last 90 days.
These are not added, excuse me, these are not added. According to the way I understand the responsibilities and the duties of the administrator, their plans, let me read this to you, "Under administrative direction of the county commissioners, directs and coordinates the operations of county departments, divisions, and agencies under the jurisdiction of the Board of County Commissioners. Prepares written reports, serves as liaison between other county officials and agencies, serves as commissioners representative at meetings and official function. Plans, assigns, and directs the operation of county departments and divisions under the jurisdiction of the county commissioners." There's nothing new that's been added. That's the responsibility of the administrator.
With all due respect, I think you both have made valid points. I would just like to comment that we get the County Commissioners Association News Bulletin and as a courtesy, they include positions that are available elsewhere in the state. Probably helped counties steal employees from other places. At any rate, I believe it's Claremont County, a county much smaller than ours, in fact, probably half the size in population, and they were advertising for an administrator. And the pay range that they advertised was $100,000. That was my first point I'd like to make. The second point is since Mr. Montine has been on sick leave, Mr. Cordez has assumed the Justice Center on his wing as we asked him to do. And while he is not a union employee, some of our, and maybe it's not union, maybe it's management, but some of our, some of the policies that we adhere to are that when someone is asked to do a job out or assume another job, a capacity, that they are paid the same as that individual would be paid for that period of time. He is not now compensated as much as Mr. Montine is. And the third point I would like to make is that last week this board put three other agencies under direct reporting to the administrator. And I'm not sure about the wage of one, but the other is making more money than Mr. Cordez is making. And I feel that this is within the scale of our pay plan. And I'm not sure if it's at the highest end. I don't believe it is, but he's still in his pay grade, C8. And I believe that since he has returned to Lorraine County, he has certainly proved his worth to the county, so I will support this pay raise.
Well, you talk about putting other responsibility of the other three departments that we did last week. That is a part of the responsibility of the administrator. It doesn't say what departments, it's all departments report, you know? And I believe that these same departments always reported to Mr. Montine. Mr. Montine had longevity. Your other employees that you're comparing him with has longevity. Now, no offense to Mr. Cordez, but he's only been here for less than two years. He's got an administrator, Mr. Montine never had, I'm sorry, assistant. Mr. Montine never had an assistant. Now, I think the bucket is full of holes.
Mr. Cordez's assistant also serves as the county's ombudsman, so it's not a full assistant to him.
It's still more than Mr. Montine had and Mr. Montine received a lot less pay than this and was here for 19 years. And you talk about Mary Lugolsky, the Director of Job and Family Services. She also supervises 350 at least employees and has the responsibility, all those residents that depend on the service of the Human Service Department. There's a lot of responsibility too. And I think the commissioners actually have more responsibility than the administrator and the legislators don't believe that we should receive that much money. So what are we talking about here?
Well, you have to remember, Mary Jo, that we're only part-time people.
No. You may be part-time, but not me.
That was supposed to be a joke. I take exception to your comment. The legislature views us as part-time employees and you very well know that.
And so all the commissioners in the State of Ohio complain about that. None of them seem to be part-time unless they're from a very small county. The job can't be done part-time.
We're very well aware of that. How do we want to proceed on this item number nine? We've each made our case, we've stated our position.
I believe this is ridiculous and shameful and I think that what it does is degrades the minds of the public. I mean, they're intelligent people and I believe anybody that's intelligent knows that this could be the wage of four different people. And I don't know, I'm not saying anymore. Your minds are made up, you can vote how you like.
Is there any further discussion on the other items that are on the agenda on the Personnel Action Summary Sheet? If not, I'll move for approval of all four items listed.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye, with the exception of that one.
Thank you.
Number 10, authorize the filing for the Department of Job and Family Services and authorize the President to execute on behalf of the Board. A, purchase of system furniture in the amount of $44,829.72 which will be paid from the shared cost allocation. The management fee is $3,768 and this purchase will be made utilizing State of Ohio Purchasing Index Number MAC 11P revised 399 with an expiration date of January 31st. The vendor will be Thomas W. Ruffin Company from Columbus and the first phase of replacing the old office furniture took place last year. This request will allow the department to finish replacing old and used furniture for staff from this year's budget. Would you like me to read out?
Does the board want to take this as a package or vote on them each individually? Do you have a preference?
Package is fine.
Okay, continue.
Purchase of access data systems from RODTC Regional Organizational Development and Training Committee grant and will not exceed $3,403. This purchase will be made utilizing State of Ohio Purchasing Index Number 533150. This system will be used to input statistical data by supervisors and quality reviewers in order to enhance program reporting and quality. C, approve training for job and family services staff who deal with OWF programs and community members who work with the OWF population. There will be approximately 255 people trained during a three one-day sessions to be held June 11th, 12th, 13th, 2001 at the Spitzer Conference Center, Lorraine, Ohio, in the total amount of $17,100. This vendor is Institute of Human Services, Columbus, Ohio, and funds are available through the state RODTC. D, approve training for job and family services staff for cultural diversity, peer mediation. There will be approximately 320 employees who will be trained during a three-day period to be held June 7th, 14th, and 28th, 2001 at the Job and Family Services Offices on North Ridge Road in the total amount of $3,290.43. The vendor is Dr. Joseph Palmer, Mediation Services of Columbus, Ohio. Funding for diversity projects has been awarded to the agency for fiscal year 2000-2001. E, approve a training seminar for 320 employees within the Job and Family Services Department entitled Time and Paper Management. Charles Fierer will provide training in the amount of $7,100 and the training session will be held at the Irish Heritage Center, Avon Lake, Ohio, in the amount of $5,834 for a total cost of $12,934. Three quotes were received and this was the lowest and most responsive.
Also move for approval?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye, did you count F in there too?
No, I think we want to continue on the next page. F, childcare renewal contracts effective dates are retroactive to April 1st, 2001 through December 31st, 2001 for Children's Center, Avon Lake, Ohio, Lorraine County Community Children's Center, Alariah, Ohio, Diamond Child Preschool Incorporated, Avon, Ohio, Esther's Fund and Friends Gang, Lorraine, Ohio, Kindy College, North Olmsted, Kindy College Child Care Center, North Ridgeville, Kindy Care Learning Centers Incorporated, Alariah, The Chaperone Rouge, North Olmsted, Lorraine County Community Action Agency, Lorraine, and Sunshine Preschool and daycare, North Ridgeville.
Also move?
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Receive and journalize annual highway report estimated by the Lorraine County Engineer showing a summary of the condition of each county road including greater patch and chip and seal program completed in the year 2000.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Resolution providing for the issuance of notes of the County of Lorraine, Ohio, in the aggregate principal amount of $2 million in anticipation of issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying costs of making permanent improvements to roads, highways, and bridges within the county. The county engineer and the county auditor are hereby authorized and directed to give effect to each such appropriation by causing the county's first receipt each year from the State of Ohio Gasoline Excess Tax Fund to be deposited in the bond retirement fund and to be applied exclusively to the payment of the principal of and interest on the notes or the bonds at the time in the amount due and payable.
This is an issue that Mr. Cordez has been working on with County Engineer Ken Carney. I believe you took some action previously to move it to this step. Mr. Cordez?
Mr. Carney is here. If the board would like him to speak. And I would also like to commend the Budget Department. They've really done the work on this bond. I carried the issue, but the Budget Department did all the work. So John Staff was really pivotal in getting this done.
Mr. Carney?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have a presentation showing you where these projects are going to be located.
And this is John Hamilton, your chief deputy assisting you. Good morning John.
Assistant County Engineer.
Thank you.
You probably had a hefty package I gave you April 6th and it showed the variables within this proposal included a listing of our federal aid projects that we are expected to fund with this bond. It also relates to a buyout program that saves our department and only our department MVGT employees savings to enhance this repayment.
Excuse me please, would you explain what the MVGT is? Yesterday during this class session, we talked about gas tax and different taxes. Would you explain for benefit of the children what that is?
The county engineer's office are not general funded. They're only funded by a certain fee and that would be motor vehicle gas tax and license fees. We receive portions of monies from license fees, the license plates on the back of your automobiles. And there's a certain percentage of monies that are derived from the gas tax itself, which is state imposed, and we receive a small portion of that. Our budget is basically 80% funded by the license plate fees and 20% by gas tax. And those are the only funds we receive.
Thanks Ken.
Gas goes up, we still get the same tax, get the same flat.
You mean you don't get the increase?
We don't get the increase whatsoever.
Maybe I ought to make that clear.
BP gets that. But to give you a rundown, you'll see the projects on your second page of the package. It shows our revised list. It's an ongoing list. If you recall, once a year I give you my five-year program every year. We revise that once a year for obvious reasons. Road conditions, traffic installations, signalizations, ADT kicks up, parking lot gets developed down the street, shopping centers are developed. All those effects we review every year to determine what's my highest priority road systems we need to get federally funded. These are it. These are our highest federal funded priority jobs. Those are 80% federal funded projects. The 20% would be our obligation. I intend to apply for Ohio Public Works Commission funding for the entire 20%. Never lost a job yet. We've always got our 20%. That means this job is 100% grant funded. All we need to do is the engineering. Now, if you recall Governor Tapp years ago, probably two years ago, had a railroad program, let's see, how can I phrase it, railroad separation or grade separations, underpasses, overpasses, whatever they desired. $200 million. First thing he said, you design it first, we'll prioritize you. If you don't design it first, you're not going to get MPO Metropolitan Planning Organization money. You're not going to get that money unless you get the act together so quickly that you need to get this designed. I say this to municipalities all the time. When they come before Ohio Public Works Commission monies, because I'm chairman of that commission, there is a certain amount of reward for points if you're ready to go. If you can build this thing in six months, you've got four points. If you don't build it in two years, you've got zero and we take your money back. You've only got a certain, that's the speed of engineering. That's an attractiveness of that, of speed is the fact that you're going to get your money if you're first in line. So that's why we're proposing this. This is a bond. I am responsible for that bond. Only motor vehicle gas tax funds will be utilized to pay this bond. No general fund. These are the projects you'll see here. They're contiguous to municipalities as well as some outside bridges I have available. This constitutes a bridge program also, if you see on the bottom of your second page. More importantly, this started probably back in 1998. And in my last letter, and I bring this to your attention again, that we have letters of support from almost every facet of the county on this proposal itself. We have supports from the City of Lorraine, Mayor Kuzura, Mayor Fulton, ex-Mayor Kuzura, Village of Sheffield, Amherst Township Trustees, Columbia Township, Eaton Township, Alariah Township, Sheffield Township, Lorraine County Alliance has proposed endorsement of this. And the BULC, Lorraine County Chamber of Commerce, Build Up Lorraine County. We've got a tremendous amount of support for this concept. You have no obligation, I do. I just need your approval to pay the bill. One of those methods to pay that bill is my two-year buyout program. If you'll see on the colored page that there's, the attractiveness to this particular buyout is, it's kind of an enhanced attrition. 1985, we had 105 employees. I have 83. We're doing more work with less people and we intend to do the same. This two-year buyout is more of an enhanced attrition. It gives me savings in order to facilitate the ease of paying off the bond. It's very attractive. If you recall, Kiowa County had a five-year buyout approved, I believe, two weeks ago. They proposed to save between 22 to 44 million dollars in the next five years. And my savings for the two-year, if it's approved, would be 483,000. These people will not be replaced. This two-year period shows that type of savings. And only availability to this is people with 28 years in or people over 55 with, less than 55 with 30 years in. Something to consider. I'm a frugal man. I don't intend to hire a tremendous amount of summer help this summer. I'm going to save monies in that area. I'm hoping we get more retirees so I can save money on that. As I say, these people on that list are motor vehicle gas tax employees only. It's a direct relationship to the repayment of this bond cost.
Can you give us a list, I believe we have it here, but maybe the public would be interested in knowing the projects that will be completed with this funding?
Yes, without question. I have copies available. I have maps available of this and I have a list of these projects also.
I think there's a copy of a spreadsheet in the package.
Yeah, we have a copy of it, but I
And after the conclusion of their official presentation, they had a roundtable discussion. And one of the, one of the issues discussed was how do we bring back those federal and state dollars to Lorain County? And one of the prime issues is always getting the engineering done on projects so that you can seek the match money. So I'm fully in support of the resolution to issue the notes. I do believe that the buyout is an issue that needs to be discussed further with our administrator and is not to be decided today. That's my opinion.
Yes, I would like to discuss that with the board in one of our sessions next week concerning the buyout. Right now, we're ready to go into the bond. It's a good time to go into bonds. We're going to get very low rates. We're looking for about three and a quarter.
Are those fixed rates?
There'll be a fixed rate bond. Is that correct, Mr. Ocasie?
That's correct.
We will, we lock in the rate today, and we're very excited about that. Also, I need to point out that because we're pledging motor vehicle gas tax against this bond, it doesn't count against our G.O. So it won't inhibit us any when we have to work with the Justice Center financing. This will be a self-supporting bond issue. So that's good for us. That's why we went in this direction with pledging motor vehicle gas tax.
So what was the buyout discussion all about then? Just trying to get two-for-one on this, or?
Well, the buyout was a-
That's news to me. I just saw it.
It is new to you, Commissioner, and we have not discussed it.
Okay, so we'll discuss it next week.
We will, because the original genesis of this, of this bond issue, when we started talking about it, did have an older buyout plan with it in order to do debt service on that, on the bond. We kind of moved it to the side and didn't really deal with it. There wasn't a lot of desire to deal with it before. With some changes that have been made to it, it looks like it may be a very cost-effective way of paying this bond off. That's why I'd like to discuss it with the board. You have not been briefed on any of this, and that's why I'm asking that we meet sometime next week or the week after when we talk about the buyout.
But these buyouts are not absolutely necessary for you to make payment on these bonds?
No, I'm, as I say, I have preparations in the future to obtain those monies to pay off that bond. As I say, I'll probably diminish my summer program. I might save about $80,000 on that. And there's other savings incurred, too.
All right, I would so move on, resolution number 12. I'll second.
Further discussion? Ms. Facy?
Hi.
Ms. Blair?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Approve and enter into an emergency services department mutual aid agreement between Lorain County Commissioners by and through the Emergency Management Agency in various political subdivisions within Lorain County, Ohio, primarily designed for mass casualties, horrific accidents. This is no liability on the part of the agency requesting mutual aid or the agency providing mutual aid. And agencies will not bill one another or the accident victims for this mutual aid. This agreement is effective April 12th, 2001, and contains a 60-day bring cancellation clause.
Tom Kelly, our Emergency Management Agency Director.
I don't know if you have any questions or not. Tom Kelly, K.E.L.L.E.Y., Emergency Management Director. We are in the process over the last year or so updating a lot of the county's emergency operations plans. And one of the sections of that is mass casualty response. That includes, we have such possibilities around here as the turnpike, the airplane approach to Hopkins. So we had to have the possibility of a large casualty accident. There's been such a change in Lorain County over the last couple of years. A lot of emergency squads have gone to what they call basic emergency medical technicians to paramedic squads. That has never been changed in our plan, and we've had hospitals close recently, and all that needs to be updated. There are only 45, approximately 45 ambulances in Lorain County. 25 of those are private, and we never had any capability legally through a document to call upon those privates if a public agency was involved and vice versa. So what we did was we worked on this plan to involve the public and the private entities. And I'd like to, if I could, call upon Chief Kirin from Oberlin, so with the Fire Chiefs Association, he can explain a little bit about this also.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Oh, I'm sorry.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chief Dennis Kirin, K.I.R.I.N. from Oberlin, representing North Central Fire Chiefs, which is the chiefs organization for Lorain County and a few ancillary services on the border. We're proud, pleased to bring this to you. It's been actually in the works since about 1999. We do realize that we do have an existing mutual aid contract, but as Mr. Kelly pointed out, the contract was oversighted enough that it did not include all of the private and public EMS agencies for these type incidents. We felt that when we started to work on the mass casualty incident with a task force unit that we have in place that, of private, public, and fire agencies, that there was a definitive need to address that and put that all in paper in advance to facilitate the handling of those type incidents. We're proud to say that we did put this together. We do have to recognize Mr. Kelly for his foresight and initiative to proceed with this, and he's very energetic at it, and also the prosecutor's office for their assistance in prepping the paperwork legally. We would encourage you to consider passage of this as the initiative, and then this contract will then be sent to all the municipalities that do have fire agencies and to the public and private EMS agencies for adoption and ratification. Any questions that I can answer?
I think it's a wonderful cooperative effort for Lorain County, and I applaud all of those involved in putting this together. Mutual aid started several years ago, but this is probably the Cadillac of it, and I think it's great. Any questions? If not, also move.
Second.
Further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Hi.
Ms. Facy?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Issue notice to proceed, letters for the following. William Brothers Builders Incorporated, Elaria, for the CDBG Huntington Township Storm Renovation Project, effective April 16th, 2001. This contract was awarded by resolution number 01-244, adopted May 22nd, excuse me, March 22nd, 2001. And Williams Brothers Builders Incorporated for the CDBG Grafton Township, Bellem School Handicap Rent Project, effective April 23rd, 2001. Contract was awarded by resolution number 0183, adopted January 25th, 2001.
Also move.
Second.
Discussion?
Ron, I have a question. Do these projects go out for bid or RFPs? Because it just appears to me that it's always the same contractor that's getting CBG contracts.
Yeah, my name is Ron Twining, T.W.I.N.I.N.G., and I'm the Community Development Director. Absolutely, these projects went out for bid. They were advertised in the paper. This is a CDBG requirement. I don't have the bid tab sheets here. I think on the Huntington project, there were five contractors that came in and took the proposals out, and I think we received four back of those five. And the Grafton project, I think there were eight taken out and five returned, but they were bid. You know, these are the contractors on this particular case that has gotten the work.
Okay, because it seems quite frequent, not just recent, that it's always the same contractor.
The ones that have-
Apparently, they're giving us the best bid.
Yeah, the ones that have been doing the best quality work and giving us a good price typically in the last two years. R.A. Joseph has done work for us. Allied Construction has done work for us. Williams Brothers has done work, and we've had a couple of other contractors as well that have done work. But certainly, the lion's share seems to, right now, on a competitive bid basis, gone to Williams Brothers and R.A. Joseph. But they have all been competitively bid.
Okay, thank you, Ron.
Thank you, Ron. Commander clerk? Ms. Blair?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Ms. Facy?
Hi.
Award contract to Vassu Communications, in the amount of $49,729.81 for the tower for the Lorain County 911 Agency. Vassu Communications was the only bid received, and Robin Jones, E-911 Director, has reviewed and recommends approval.
Also move.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Hi.
Ms. Facy?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Ms. Facy?
Hi.
Award contract to Vassu Communications, in the amount of $49,729.81 for the tower for the Lorain County 911 Agency. Vassu Communications was the only bid received, and Robin Jones, E-911 Director, has reviewed and recommends approval.
Also move.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Hi.
Ms. Facy?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Award proposal to R.A. Joseph Construction Company in the amount of $5,896 for a stanchion two-by-four steel tube between the floor and tabletop of Lorain County Correctional Facility. Seats will be welded to the stanchion and the assembly painted. Sheriff Stebany has reviewed and recommends approval.
Also move.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Hi.
Ms. Facy?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Accepting the settlement claim in the amount of $6,823.81 for petroleum underground storage tank release compensation board on behalf of Lorain County Regional Airport Midwest Air Services. Claim number 7272001030394H. This warrant will be issued to B.J.A.A.M. Environmental Incorporated for excavation of six storage tanks. Michael Barth, Report Director, has reviewed and recommends approval.
Comments, Mr. Cordes?
I know this is a confusing one, and I'm sorry for that. B.J.A.M. performed some work that was going to be reimbursed by our insurance carrier. B.J.A.M. did work that was not authorized in excess of what they approved. So they offered this settlement check, and I discussed the issue with Mr. Barth, and he recommended that we approve the settlement and pass it on to B.J.A.M. Since then, the state has authorized the additional work, and there'll be another check coming to cover that work also. So I recommend that we approve this. We're pretty much only a conduit to B.J.A.M. from the state, who is paying us, paying this claim under our tank insurance.
So we're getting the same amount from the state?
Correct. It's, correct. There will be no balance billing, Commissioner.
Other questions? I'll move for approval.
I'll second.
Ms. Blair?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
I missed the discussion part.
I'm sorry.
Now, is this going, I mean, how long is it going to take? Because I know insurance companies are really quick when they send you checks. Is this going to be something that's going to take a year?
Well, this goes right to B.J.A.M. B.J.A.M. is going to be paid by the state, and they will not be billing us. So we're just approving the settlement so that the state can mail them a check.
That's all we're doing?
That's all we're doing.
Not using any of our funds?
Correct.
Okay.
Sorry, I didn't explain that well.
Well, revisit that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi.
Ms. Facy?
Hi.
Accept uninsured, uninsured motorist coverage under terms, conditions, and exclusions provided by Corsa agreement and a limit of $1 million per occurrence regardless of the number of persons injured or making a claim, effective May 1st, 2001, and authorized present to execute on behalf of the board.
Mr. Cordes, I believe this is the same as we have authorized in the past years? Is that correct?
With the addition of the uninsured motorist, there is some new issues that Corsa was concerned about. And the uninsured motorist with the million-dollar umbrella is going to cost the county about $60,000 a year. But with the insurance laws, the way they are, and with the changes taking place, I think it's essential that we pick up that coverage. If you have further questions, I'd have asked Ms. McPhee to be here, our risk manager, and she's hiding in the back of the room. Rita, would you like to step forward? Do you have something to say?
I don't have anything to say.
We'll step forward, anyway.
She's going to get you later.
Rita, microphone, please. Welcome. And identify yourself and your position.
My name is Rita McPhee, M.C.P.H.E.E., and I am the Safety Risk Manager for the Board of Commissioners. As far as the uninsured, underinsured motorist coverage that Corsa is providing for us, alls I can say is that the Commissioners were very fortunate to sign a three-year contract with Corsa being self-insured. We have seen a 10%, well, actually, a 9.2% increase in our premium. However, in the open market for private industry, those same premiums for that amount of coverage has gone up 25 to 35%. So I congratulate the Board on continuing to be self-insured. Thank you.
Now, are we insuring, who are we insuring with this blanket policy? Are we insuring that every county vehicle or every county employee, or? I don't understand.
We are covering all county vehicles. We are covering all county employees who drive on behalf of the county.
Now, is this coming out of our general fund? Or is this coming out of each department that has their own revenue stream?
Good question.
I see John, he's jumping up and down behind you.
Okay, John, you want to field it? Go for it.
I'll field that one. It is initially paid the premium out of the county general fund, and then through in the red cross, we recruit those amounts from special revenue funds. So the payment is centralized, but we do recruit from the other-
So each department that has, let's say, 20 cars, we could, that has their own revenue stream, then we can get collected back to our general fund, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
We don't collect it back in percentage of vehicles, but it adds an overall percentage.
Okay.
And John, that's on the DMG study, right? That's done each year?
Yes, and it's a professional agency.
Rita, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe Corsa charges us per vehicle. It's just one package deal, and we can add other vehicles. The same thing with buildings.
Well, we ensure the, each year, we do take a vehicle inventory, and we hand that to them, and that's what we base our insurance premium on. However, we do have that 90-day window to, if we add on, they are covered.
Okay, thanks.
Could I get a copy of that inventory of vehicles?
Certainly.
That you send every year? I'd like to see that.
Okay.
Other questions?
Jim's getting slow, so I'd give him something to do, please.
Also move.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Hi.
Ms. Facy?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Authorize a warrant to be issued for the premium in the amount of $658,559 to Corsa for the 2001, 2002 benefit year.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Hi.
Ms. Facy?
Hi.
Mr. Moore?
Hi.
Mr. Cordes, County Administrator?
I have a report today.
Ms. Dennis?
I have submitted to the Commissioners earlier in the week a proposal for implementing some regulations regarding the use of domestic foreign steel in our projects. I submitted to you several documents, a resolution, an affidavit that would go along with that, and then some instructions in contract language to be included in our contracts. Since sending that to you, I've got some input. There are some minor verbiage changes and a few typo things that might be need to be done with that. The most significant things that I need to call to your attention, what this would provide, well, there's two issues. One, this provides for putting a penalty upon private contractors who use non-domestic steel products. I also have a provision in there for any entity who does a project using funds that the county gives to them. They would have to implement a similar agreement with projects that they use. What I have implemented in there is a provision that if, if a contractor knowingly uses non-domestic steel, they would pay liquidated damages penalty. I have left that amount blank. I think we talked in terms of putting 100% in there, but that was a little bit up in the air at the end, so I would need an indication as to what sort of, if that's indeed what you want to go ahead with. I also include, what this involves on the enforcement end, you asked me to look into that, and what I found out is there is what is called a mill certificate report that apparently all American companies obtain. This is not something that contractors would have to do additionally, but is, is done routinely so that it should not have to place an additional burden on our contractors. And basically, what we're saying to them is you must, as part of the contract, provide us with one of these certificates which documents where the, of the mill at which the steel originated. I had earlier to that prepared an affidavit. I've been advised that if we do the mill certificate, the affidavit is kind of unnecessary, so you may want to delete that altogether. I think those are the only things I wanted to add to the written materials I gave to you. If the Commissioners have any questions.
Okay, so what we have to decide on is the amount, the percentage amount?
Well, the percentage amount, do you want to include the provision regarding monies we send to other political entities?
Yes.
And that sort of thing?
I, I would. I believe that it should be done throughout the county, wherever general fund money is used.
Commissioner Moore?
That's fine.
Okay. And I concur with that, so we all agree that other political entities should be included?
And what, what percentage, what we agree on? The state has 150%.
I believe the discussion last week was at 100%.
I don't know if it's collectible, but it sends a message, which is what we're doing, right?
I think it, I think it would be collectible if we pursue it, so.
I have incorporated a best efforts type thing, so what I'm, what I say in there is to the best of their knowledge, but it does include a requirement that they exercise due diligence in attempting to confirm.
So we're in agreement that the penalty should be 100%? Is that the consensus of the Board?
I'd like to go 150%, and then.
150's fine.
It would be the same as what the state is.
As long as we're consistent with the state.
Okay.
They'll end up with a 300% fine.
And the Board wants to include 150%?
Yeah, that'll be fine.
All right, and then the other issue?
Who collects the 150% with the?
We would, if we, if we discover, and, and, well, if there, if there, if we discover that there is a, a problem here, it would be a violation of the contract, and by stipulating the damages, that, what that says is we don't have to prove how the county has been harmed, or how, you know, that just says that's the penalty.
And where would the money go to, then? Let's say we collected the money. Can we identify that, since domestic or foreign steel has hurt in our economy? Maybe we can dump those penalties into economic development? I'm just trying, I didn't see.
It would generally come back into the general fund, and then we could allocate it to some other.
I'm just thinking, if we're going to penalize, we should use it to the benefit of the steelworkers somehow, you know?
Well, we can always decide on.
When that comes in?
Yeah.
I suppose there might be some.
Yeah, that's true.
There might be some issues if we got involved in state grant funding or something that was a specific grant-funded thing, that would probably have to go back into that grant.
As long as we use it for that purpose, that's all I'm worried about. Sorry, Ryan, I'm trying to get you a few more dollars.
And the other issue was, you commented on the mill certificate, and if we had that available, then we would not need to use the affidavit. Is that, am I understanding?
Wouldn't be necessary. Are you saying we need to add that in the language?
No, I think that Jerry said that he prepared an affidavit, and if.
I could either keep it, or if we feel it's just overkill, I can delete it.
I think it's redundant. I don't think we need it.
No, we don't.
Okay.
So we're going to discard the affidavit, then?
Yes.
Okay.
And if I could have one more point of clarification, the 150%, did you want to apply that to both the private contractors and public entities?
I think we should be consistent.
Okay. Just want to be clear.
Okay. Any other discussion on this resolution that Jerry's prepared for us?
No, I would move to approve the resolution to take all necessary measures to halt the injurious dumping of foreign steel in the county, of Lorraine County. And also, I would like to thank Jerry for his work, and Tom Lehman, and Larry Iantelli, and Larry Moser. They were very helpful in putting this together, and Jerry did a lot of work on it, so did Tom. And Tom directed us to the right people to get the right language into the resolution. So thanks again.
I'll second that motion.
Are there discussions?
And of course, that motion includes all the changes. Want to get that on the record?
Ms. Facy?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Thank you, Jerry.
I don't have anything else, Mr. Moore.
It is about 10:30, the public hearing. Do you want to do that now, or?
Yes. So we'll be timely. Thank you. At 10:30, we have a public hearing, the first of two public hearings on the State of Ohio, small cities, community development block grant programs available for fiscal year 2001. Mr. Twining, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners and public. It's my pleasure to introduce two staff members, Rebecca Jones and Kelly Glenn. They are circulating with handouts for everybody here. Make sure that they go to the media and the Commissioners as well. And a sign-in sheet. This is the first of two public hearings for the fiscal year 2000 Community Development Block Grant Program, also known as CDBG. We are obligated to hold the first public hearing to allow the public an opportunity and organization and officials throughout the county to hear what programs are available through the CDBG program, and also to receive comment back during a review period from those organizations and officials throughout the county for their needs in order to utilize the CDBG funds. As an overview, there are several programs that establish the legislation behind CDBG. The first program authorizing this was the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974, as amended in 1992, that established CDBG funding. This is a program that is administered under the Housing and Urban Development Department at the federal level, and you have entitlement and state small-city CDBG allocations throughout the, the nation, and the State of Ohio certainly receives that through the Department of Development. The, the Act itself, that was originally passed in '74, establishes three national objectives that must be met. Any activities using the CDBG funds must meet one of these three national objectives. Those objectives have been modified but not changed since '74. Those three include benefit to low and moderate-income persons and households. Number two, aid in the elimination of slum and blight conditions. Number three, meet the urgent community development needs. The Act established eliminate community development activities, or to eligible community development activities which can be funded with CDBG dollars, includes basically four areas. First area is activities designated to create jobs. Quite often in Lorraine County, we talk about job creation, expansion, and retention. These jobs, when using CDBG funds, must create jobs for low and moderate-income people. The second activities would include provisions for housing, to improve the housing stocks related to public facility improvements. The third activity is designated for the removal of architectural barriers that exist in our public structures and in public rights of way. And the fourth area is certain types of public service activities. We do this every year at about this time because that's a requirement. We're caught between the state's consolidated plan that expires the 30th of the year, and the new one will kick in on July 1st of 2001. That is out for public comment and review. We have two copies in our office. If anybody wants to, to take a look at it, we will make that available. The State of Ohio puts this together based on the federal requirements and the intended plan for the state, and then we are obligated to follow our guidelines here at the county level under this consolidated plan. Currently, we are under the consolidated plan for 2000, which is due to expire June 30th of this year. We are using four basic areas, which are also the four areas eligible for CDBG funds, but Lorraine County has been pretty good of recent times using all four areas, specifically the program grants that we are receiving. We're working on the 2000 CHIP, or Community Housing Improvement Grant, $500,000. It was awarded to us last year. Second area is the, sometimes called Small Cities, but it's officially known as the Formula Grant Program, which I will talk in greater detail here in just a moment. The third area is an ongoing progress, and that is economic development projects. And fourth is the general administration that is allowed under CDBG dollars. Today, specifically, I would like to highlight some things for the Formula Grant because this is the first activity or grant proposal to the state that Lorraine County is eligible to submit. Lorraine County is classified as an acquired county. As an acquired county, we basically have to have a county population of less than 200,000 citizens once we remove the entitlement city's population. City of Elyria and City of Lorraine are the entitlement cities, meaning both cities have 50,000 residents or more. They secure their funding not from the State of Ohio, and not through the county, but go directly to the federal government and HUD. Once we remove the population of those two cities, Lorraine County's population is 160,059 residents. That's based on the new 2000 census just recently released. So we are still classified as an acquired county. As an acquired county, what that means is that we have the acquired cities, five in our case, Amherst, Avon, Avon Lake, Oberlin, and Sheffield Lake, that receive their funding through the Board of County Commissioners here in Lorraine County. We, on their behalf, apply for their money and administer their funds to them. The other villages and townships will receive their money directly through the county's remaining allocation, and for purposes of discussion, I have included that in your handout today, and you'll see that on page two. The county's allocation for the cities and townships and counties' use is $272,000. The acquired city of Ava, or of Amherst, they are receiving $34,000. Avon, $21,000. Avon Lake, $39,000. Oberlin, $37,000. And Sheffield Lake will receive $34,000. The second item, or, I'm sorry, the third item is the Economic Development Program. As, as I've alluded to earlier, this is an ongoing program. Every year, again, we have to announce to the general public so that they are aware of some of the types of programs that we can secure funds under economic development, and they are, again, primarily for the job creation, business retention, and attraction. Lorraine County has utilized economic development funds to establish our county revolving loan fund. We have also provided infrastructure improvements for several communities and specific projects. Probably the largest grant that we received under the Economic Development Program recently was a package deal made up of about four different funding sources in this, and that was for $350,000 for a firm located in Sheffield Township. We did use economic development funds, including our own county revolving loan fund, to help 10 years ago with the establishment of the Avon Ford Plant, and so that falls under the CDBG allocation under economic development. The most recent use of these funds and programs was the establishment of October, where the State of Ohio has authorized us to operate a brand-new program called the Micro Enterprise Business Program. We're referring to that locally as LAMP, and that is doing rather nicely, folks. I appreciate that. The fourth item is just the administration, and in order to explain to the public annually, we want to assure everybody that under the federal guidelines, the county, as the chief administration for these grant funds, is permitted to receive or retain up to 15% of the county's total allocation, and that will be the 272. We also can keep and often retain up to the 15% for the administration for those five small cities. In total, Lorraine County administrative cost for operating this $437,000 program is $65,550 for the administration. In conclusion, the State of Ohio provides annual, annually a consolidated plan. This is the document that we have here today. It will be released in July of 2001. We are currently operating off from the one that is due to expire June 30th of 2001, and will be replaced by this document as modified. In your packet today, I think in total, you have eight photo, or photocopies of pieces of paper. The information that I've just gone over is the first four pages. The last four pages is the summary, the executive summary, that I received from the State of Ohio for the consolidated plan, and how the state intends to use this federal money that they're passing through the State Department of Development down to Lorraine County. At this point, I would ask if the public or Commissioners, anyone present today, might have any questions that we could try to address this morning, and if we are unable to address those questions, we will get back to the individual. Are there questions?
Nelson, I'm sorry, did you have questions, Commissioner Facy?
I do have one. I see in here that you have water and sewer program?
Yes, we do.
And there's $10 million?
That's $10 million for the State of Ohio to use, and it's in LMI areas, and it can be used for public facilities or for the removal of slum and blight. We've used that in the past, places like the Elyria Township. Antrim Road was the most recent area. In the 2000 fiscal year, we are, are using some of our money for water facilities, but part of your $437,000 that were allocated is coming out of that $10 million identified by the state for water facilities.
So that was my question. What portion of this $10 million will Lorraine County receive?
That's not how the state administers the program. They know that they have contributed $10 million. We have until July 9th to get our state formula grant application into them. They collect all. I think in total, there are 80 of the 88 counties that they administer funds for. They see what the requests are from the 80 counties, and then they match up their requirement with how much money they have allocated. We may put in for $200,000 for water and sewer, but if that exceeds the $10 million identified by the state, we may not get all of our money, or we may not get any of the money in that particular category. That decision is made by the state. But it is an eligible activity that we certainly can apply for funding there, and, and, you know, they work with us between that July submittal date and September when they award the contracts.
Do we have any projects that we will be applying for money under this category?
It's part of our formula grant application. As soon as this public hearing is declared closed, we will send out, and we're prepared to send out tomorrow, letters to all of the 35, or 33 political jurisdictions in Lorraine County, letting them know how much money the, the state has, the types of projects that are eligible, and we will take applications from the various jurisdictions in Lorraine County and try the best we can to match that up. So Commissioner, during the second public hearing on the formula grant, which will be held in June, we can give you a definitive answer. Right now, we're letting everybody know the funds are available, and if they've got a project they want us to check out and to see how it might fold into this and the state's consolidated plan, then we will try and match that up. But I don't know what projects might be out there.
Okay, I was just thinking about Columbia Township with that annexation.
Sure.
Issue out there, if they could maybe apply for some of this.
They certainly could.
Is that all, Commissioner Facy?
That's it, thank you.
Mr. Commissioner Moore?
Nelson Ramirez, would you come forward, Nelson, and identify yourself, and then ask your question, please?
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Nelson Ramirez, R-A-M-I-R-Z, Vice President of Planning, Development, and Research for Lorraine County Community Action Agency. And Mr. Twining, I just wanted to get some clarification so I could understand. I may not, I may have missed it in your initial summary, but my question is, how does one, how does a city acquire, obtain the acquired city's status?
Thank you, and that is the purpose for today's public hearing, to answer those types of questions. That's an excellent question. I apologize for not being as clear as perhaps I should have been. Any city that, and in order to be designated as a city, you have to have a population of 5,000 residents or more, and under this program, you are an acquired city if you have a population of at least 5,000. 5,000 and a population of less than 50,000. If you are in that category, and we have five in Lorraine County that are, then you are designated as an acquired city, and your funding must go through the county of your jurisdiction. In our particular case, because we are also an acquired county, we must go to the state of Ohio rather than directly to the federal government. The only city beyond Elyria and Lorraine which have a population in excess of 50,000 that you do not see on that list is North Ridgeville. There is another caveat in their regulations. It says an acquired city must go through the county unless their state allocation for funding, based on population and a few other criteria, is more than $50,000. City of North Ridgeville is receiving greater than $50,000, so they do not go through the county. They go directly to the state, even though they're still classified as an acquired city. The entitlement cities have a population over 50,000, and therefore, it's deemed that they're likely to have the professional staff to appropriately develop and operate grants and implement the federal grants. So they do not need to go to the county or to the state and can go directly to the federal government. The other question that quite often comes up is the city of Vermillion. Vermillion is in both Erie and Lorraine County, and it has been the state's determination that Vermillion will receive its funding primarily from Erie County rather than Lorraine County, because that's where the bulk of their traditional downtown area is. However, that portion, it is in Lorraine County in terms of housing improvement programs, public facilities, water sewers, and things like that. If they want to make those improvements, and they are definitely meeting the national objectives and physically located in Lorraine County, they are eligible to come to our department and secure funding for those programs. I know that's somewhat complicated, but hopefully I answered your question.
Thank you, Mr. Twining. David Ashenhurst, please come forward, David.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is David Ashenhurst, A-S-H-E-N-H-U-R-S-T, and I'm a consultant based in Oberlin. I just wanted to ask, the letters of notification of available funds will be sent to communities and organizations. How is the list of organizations that will receive those letters compiled? And will the people who signed into this hearing today, by signing in, get a copy of that letter of available funding? Thank you.
Thank you. The people that signed in today, if they contact me or let me know before you leave here today that you want a copy of that letter, we would be happy to make a copy of that available to you, as well as the application that we are receiving. You do not automatically receive the information. The only new information that you would be receiving, if you asked for that packet, is basically the application to fill out itself. The second part is, I heard David's question, who and how did we arrive at the list of notifications? Anybody that contacts us, and the purpose of putting this in the paper, announcing 30 days in advance that we're going to hold this public hearing, is just that, to have people come to hear about the program and to let us know that they may have a project or a need. In addition to that, we also send out to all of the 33 political jurisdictions in the county this standard letter. The organizations that receive a copy automatically under the national objectives, one of the things that we have to provide for through CDBG funds, we're obligated to do, is for someone to provide homeless shelter. Counseling for senior citizens is another requirement. We have had people in past years apply for funding, whether they received the funding or not. Anybody that has applied for CDBG funding automatically receives this letter, and that's the organizations. In addition to that, there are a couple of consulting firms that have called and specifically asked to include a copy of the letter and the application process, and we honor that request. These are all, the mailings are paid for, and the copies are paid for by the CDBG funds, and that's the purpose, to get worthwhile programs applying to utilize these funds as appropriately deemed. Does that answer your question, David?
It does answer my question. I would suggest at minimum that a copy be sent to the Association of Nonprofit Organizations in Lorraine County so that, at least, if there is a network functioning there that is supposed to, of organizations in Lorraine County that would be eligible. I understood the political jurisdictions, but I'm really asking about the nonprofits. And it seems to me that would at least cover specifically, rather than just posting a notice in the newspaper. And it's up to that association to make it known to their members that the second hearing will be held and that these funds are available. That's what I would suggest, at least at minimum, that that be added, not to everybody on their mailing list, but to the association itself. Thank you. And I can provide that address and information. Thank you.
With that request, we'd be happy to honor that.
Thank you, Mr. Twining. Are there any questions during this public hearing in the audience?
Would you please give your phone number, Ron, in case anyone needs to contact you afterwards? They can call your community development department.
Do I have to give my phone number?
No. Your department's number would be fine.
Our department's number, and I will give two that we can be reached at. It's area code 440-329-5302, and that would be directly to my office. And we do have voicemails, so you can call 24 hours a day. The other number is the CDBG coordinator that handles this program, is probably as well-versed or more so than myself, and that would be Kelly Glenn, and her number is 329-5372.
Thank you, Ron. And seeing no other comments being offered, I will declare that this public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. May I, Madam Clerk, let's return to the agenda under Commissioner's report. Do you want them to leave now?
I think the kids have to leave.
Well, you said 11:00, so I thought they could stay.
Yeah, but they could sit in the back until 11:00. This way, they won't interrupt.
Okay. I want to thank the young ladies and gentlemen who came this morning. I think they showed a lot of interest, and we appreciate your attendance. You have a good rest of the day.
Thank you.
I'll keep my pen. You take your paperwork. It was nice meeting you. Just a little bit, sure. That's okay. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner's report.
Commissioners?
Yes, I have. The decision we make regarding Justice Center is one that will live with us for decades. Therefore, I move to appoint a committee and charge them to review the budget with Mr. Rokasie, Mr. Nabokowski, and the Budget Commission for the Justice Center finances, inventory, county-owned facilities that will house other departments that will not be going into the Justice Center, and review the economy. The review should be completed within one month, and the appointees should be neutral, not involved with the court system or the administration building. And then they would provide recommendations to the Board of Commissioners.
This is a new concept. The board has, I have not given this particular approach any thought. We were supposed to meet this week on Tuesday, but because we did not have a full board available, we did not meet to formulate how we were going to proceed with viewing the issue of funding availability, in my opinion. Before we adopt a motion such as that, I would also ask that the board give consideration to perhaps hiring a, I don't know if I want to say a mediation service, and/or someone perhaps from the Urban Center at Cleveland State University to look at our budget numbers. I think that we have some expertise from both ends of the spectrum that have been given to us, and I think we need to make a decision about where those numbers really are. And although I appreciate the suggestion, it's going to take some time to educate some residents about the funding aspect, which I think is crucial to this issue. And if you remember, Commissioner Vacy, several years ago, we did have the Blue Ribbon Committee through the Public Services Institute at Lorraine County Community College when we had some funding questions within our county. And they did a three-month, I think. And then we got funding from the Nord Family Foundation, and they did a whole-year study about our budget. So I'm not sure that this is something that just a small group of people, whoever they are, could be introduced to and be expected to understand, and then come up with a recommendation in a short period of time. So I would just ask that we at least give this, the whole concept, some more consideration before we decide to proceed with something of that nature.
Well, I was thinking, since Mr. Nabokowski and Mr. Rokasie's figures didn't match, I thought maybe if we can get some neutral residents that understand figures to review the budget and see what we can do. I don't think it would take that much for people to understand the budget. It's pretty simple.
Commissioner Moore?
Sorry, I didn't come on Tuesday for the executive session.
Which didn't happen. Which didn't happen.
Well, it's kind of hard to say no to a judge, and you're on a three-hour tour of the facilities. So it was a good meeting. I got to walk around and see everybody. I'm, we're really close. I don't think we really need a committee. It should have been done maybe five years ago, but I think we're at the stage now where we're really close. I think we all are. We're, I think, well, John hid. He probably knew we were going to talk about this, so he left. We're really close to a, he's coming up with a five-year budget within, on April 30th, with minimum and maximum revenues and expenditures. That's all what the three of us really need, is take a look at what his projections are going to be. And then, once we get the budget, we need to, we need to kind of figure out next is what, how much cash we're going to use, and that's going to be our three decisions, and how much are we going to borrow? And another thing is, after last Thursday's meeting, I was a little uncomfortable with it, so I got, I got one phone call. I have another person that I talked to. These are two long-term architects that are doing this because they are Lorraine County taxpayers. They live in this county. They don't work in the county, they work outside the county. I will not give them their names for obvious reasons. And they're willing, in the next two weeks, to review the preliminary drawings of the architectural design of the Justice Center, to give, and I'll share it with the two of you, and what they come up with, what they think the actual cost per square foot should be. And, because I'm a little concerned at that. And then basically come up with a plan, because Commissioner Vacy has provided a list of all the buildings that we've been acquiring for the last couple of years. And some of the ideas, walking around with Judge Zaleski, was to put adult probation in the Bobos Building, use the old courthouse for the prosecutor, the library, the visiting judge, the Court of Appeals. You know, we're moving, possibly saving hundreds of thousands of dollars, with moving solid waste over the Capo Management Building, where they're at, and maybe community development in the mediation building. And so we have a lot of buildings. That's not even touching on a lot of the buildings that are unoccupied right now. And so I think we're really close. I think we're within a couple of weeks, once we get the budget. We're really close for making some decisions on the construction. We're not off on the development of the Justice Center. I really don't think so. I think when Mr. Rokasie comes with the budget, I think the three of us should be able to make an informed decision, and I think it'll be a good one. And I think it will last 100 years like our last courthouse that they built. That was before my time. So that's why I'm suggesting.
Are you suggesting that some of us might have been here?
I didn't suggest that. Oh, God. I thought I was going to be the thorn today, and you guys could be the roses. How's that? I got a little humor in that for a while. But that's, I mean, my thoughts were, it was a good meeting with Judge Zaleski. The last tour I had was with Ron Nabokowski. And if we keep looking at numbers, anybody can take numbers and keep bringing them back and bringing them back. I think we all really are really close to finalizing the decisions. And I think that's probably the next discussion we should probably have, once we get the budget. Because I'm sure the three of us will have a nice public discussion on what we should do. And I think that's probably the next step after we receive the budget. And I get the input from a couple of independent architects, just to give me, you know, for my own personal benefit, to make sure that we're on track with our current architectural firms. So that's, I mean, I'm not, I'm not for creating another, I mean, I think it's a great idea. I think it should have been done probably years ago, but unfortunately, we're at today's date, and I think we're really close. We're probably two or three weeks away from getting the information and making that decision. I really do. And I think two or three weeks of waiting for Mr. Rokasie's numbers, and we'll use Ron Nabokowski's numbers that he produced, and I think we could make a decision off of that. That's my own personal opinion.
Well, as Commissioner Blair said, don't, don't take it wrong, but we did have the Blue Ribbon Committee, so it, you know, it was done at one time. And I was just thinking about a committee, just to go over the figures, because we had a difference between Mr. Nabokowski's and Mr. Rokasie's figures, and I was concerned. And I just thought somebody neutral, looking at those figures, not affiliated with the Commissioners or the court system, would be helpful. But I understand. I mean, it's good to go over the budget with the three of us first, if that's what you prefer. Because I've got a lot of good suggestions, too, I think are good suggestions.
Right. So you got a motion?
It's dying for the lack of a second.
But it facilitated some very good discussion. Thank you, Commissioner Vacy. Anything else?
There was something else. Jim, I, somebody called me the other day. They had their car on the parking deck over here, and there was some, something that came down when it rained on their car, and I don't know if they got it off, if the car has to be buffed or what. It was a new car, a new vehicle.
I can, uh.
Did she call you?
Well, it was acid. No, I haven't, I have not.
Looks like acid.
I have not received any calls on that. Was it just yesterday?
No, this was last week. I don't know. She called me, she didn't know what to do about it. But my concern is, we just spent, what, over a million dollars repairing their deck, and now we're getting some stuff coming down on people's vehicles?
Quite a bit. There was quite a bit of money spent on the, on the, on the deck. The upper floors are made to have a certain amount of leak-off, because it's an open, open air up top, and then down into the second level, it does, you do have some of that. But we should, the dripping over the car should have been contained.
This is some kind of material, white material, that was dripping on the car, and she, so when she washed it, they, they buffed it by hand and rubbed and rubbed and couldn't get it off.
Do you have a, do you have a phone number?
Yes, I do.
I'll, I'll try to contact her. Our policy always has been, though, is, you know, you're parking at your own risk in the garage. You know, if you remember, I remember a few years back, and I'm sure you do, when pieces of garage were falling on people's cars also. So it was very perilous to park there. I'm cautious in contacting her, because that may lead her to conclude that she may be compensated for possible damage on the car. I just would like to know where the car was so that we can prevent it in the future. But I will have Mr. Smigala inspect the deck, especially when next time it rains, see if we can't track it down.
Well, she's an attorney, and she told me that she didn't really expect to be compensated. But if she couldn't get it off of her new vehicle, that she would expect to be compensated. And I was just concerned, because I thought, you know, we just spent all that money in the parking deck. We had this problem before. We repaired the parking deck, and now we're having it again.
I think we should be interested in where this is, so we can at least, if there's a problem, get to the source of it.
That's my big concern.
We're going to assign your parking spot there.
I can see where I'm going to be parking.
It did rain, so I thought maybe the rain had something to do with cement or something, and this white stuff came down on her.
Yeah, I'm sure that it's just, it may have been just some packed-up salt and ash that was flushing from the cracks and crevices of the deck. But we'll do an inspection, we'll take a look at it. We do a lot of heavy salting on the upper level of that deck, and it takes a lot to flush it out. So that may have been what it was, but I'll make the contact if you give me the number, and I'll, we'll make a walkthrough on that deck, just be on the safe side.
Thank you. Anything else, Commissioner Vacy?
That's all I had. Thank you.
Commissioner Moore?
No, I'm fine.
I have two items I'd just like to mention. On behalf of the board, I attended two, what I think are very, well, they were just great for Lorraine County this week. On Monday, I attended the Harbor Walk groundbreaking in the city of Lorraine, which is a cooperative effort between the city, Spitzer Development, and many entities. And I think it's going to be the catalyst for the redevelopment of Lorraine. And of course, the county did participate in, in a part of that, and I'm happy that we did that. And then yesterday, I attended the groundbreaking for the water park in Oberlin, which is a wonderful cooperation between Eric Nord and Lorraine Metro Parks and the city of Oberlin and their taxpayers, and a lot of people who donated money, including the Commissioners. And that facility is supposed to be ready for Memorial Day weekend next year, so I'm looking forward to those very positive developments for Lorraine County. I was very pleased to be there. Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk?
Old business?
Commissioners, I'm asking that this issue be tabled for an additional week. Ms. Vacy asked me to obtain some information, and I have not completed that task yet, and I'd like to be able to complete that task before she's required to vote on this issue.
Thank you.
Is that a board agreement?
That is the contract for the county maintenance garage addition at Rusher Road.
Sure.
All right. We'll just hold that till next week, then? We won't officially table it. We'll hold it. And we've already taken care of the resolution on the foreign steel. So we're to new business? Does anyone have any new business here?
I have none.
Public comment?
It's fine after 11:00.
I don't see any public comment. I'll move the Board Correspondence reading to be waived.
One second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye.
And now Mary Lou Golfsky, our Director of Lorraine County Department of Job and Family Services regarding public assistant trends. Good morning, Mary Lou.
Good morning. Hi, I'm Mary Lou Golfsky. I'm Director of Lorraine County Job and Family Services. There's recently been a lot of media attention given to welfare reform, which began in October of 1997. Locally, we've been able to reduce our cash assistance program by over 50%. Clients have been able to find jobs and reduce their dependence on public assistance. In addition, we've offered programs through our PRC, which is Prevention, Retention, and Contingency Program, to divert families from applying for assistance. If their car needed repair, we offered that help. That prevented them from having to come on total assistance. In addition to offering public, the PRC program, states, the state allowed us to exempt clients in order for them to continue receiving assistance. To date, we've exempted 50 clients who reached their time limits. We've been given 408 slots. So most, as you can see, most of the clients that reached time limits were able to find jobs and become gainfully employed. Today, we're here to offer some additional insight to beyond welfare reform, what's really happening to the public assistance program in Lorraine County. And I've brought Marion Slovak. She's the income maintenance, one of the income maintenance administrators with the Department, who will provide that insight for you. Thank you.
Good morning, Marion.
Good morning. You'll give me a second. Okay, good morning. My name's Marion Slovak, S-L-O-V-A-K, Program Administrator with Lorraine County Job and Family Services. Our public assistance programs include more than our cash welfare rolls. And what I brought is a chart showing the numbers, the assistance groups in the various categories, and, excuse me, and how those numbers have changed over the years. In the first column, showing the different timeframes, December of '96, December of '97, going down through the quarters of '98, '99, into 2000 through March of 2001. Our next categories are showing those who are on cash assistance, the ADC program, which is now referred to Ohio Works First. Our next column is the ADC medical cases. Those are our families who are receiving family Medicaid, and that includes our Healthy Start programs. Then we go on to our food stamp programs, our general assistance disability cash programs, our community Medicaid programs, and then our other categories, which is including our Medicare supplemental programs. And then it shows you the total of what those assistance groups were. As you can see, back in 1996, we had over 28,000 assistance groups. With welfare reform, with the good economy, those numbers steadily declined through 1999. As of 1999, excuse me, as of 1999, you can see that our total assistance groups went down to 21,500 families or individuals. And when you look under the different categories, under the ADC cash programs, from over 4,000 families down to 1,650. If you look into the ADC medical, the family medical programs, 66,000, 6,600 families down to 5,600 families. Food stamps significantly decreased. Disability assistance had some decline. Community Medicaid, individuals who are disabled or elderly or in our nursing homes, declined. There was an increase in our other categories, which would be elderly-disabled individuals receiving Medicare, who had an, came in and received our Q and B, Slim B programs, where we pay their Medicare premiums for them. Once we get into last year, 2000, we can see that there are increases occurring in our family Medicaid areas. So that although our cash rolls stayed comparable around 1,550 families, our ADC family Medicaid individuals have increased. As of March of 2000, we have 7,528 families receiving family Medicaid. Again, a lot on the Healthy Start program. So there has been an increase of a couple thousand families in that area. Okay, a lot of the increase in the family Medicaid can be attributed to changes that were made in the regulations at the state and the federal level. Back in early 2000, the Department made a lot of our regulations simpler for individuals to apply and receive benefits. In July of 2000, they expanded the program. Healthy Start increased from 150 to 200% of poverty, and they created a new program called Healthy Families that allows families at 100% of poverty to receive medical coverage, including the parents, not just the children. Face-to-face interviews were waived for all of our family Medicaid categories, so that these individuals no longer need to come into our office. They can apply through the mail, and we can deal with our correspondence just through the mail in order to determine their eligibility. So it's a lot easier now to apply and receive the family Medicaid, and we're seeing that increase occurring in our roles. I brought some charts showing the changes in our caseload size from '97 through 2000, as well as showing the volume, the increases in our intake applications. So, and attached with most of the packets that I gave out, this information is there. So in 1997, we started out with over almost 13,800 various families or individuals receiving assistance, and had a steady decline throughout 1997. '98, we were around 12,600 families, 12,700 families. Again, steady decline. 1999, started out around 12,400 families or individuals. Again, steady decline. The year 2000 came, we started out about the same place and had a gradual increase until about June or July, a slight dip, and then a significant increase. So our rolls are going up, and it's reflecting in the family Medicaid areas. Our average caseload started out, again, if you just take a 12-month average of how many cases we dealt with, over 13,000, down to less than 12,600, down to 12,200, and in the year 2000, back on the upswing. As far as families and individuals applying, '97 is the red. There's a ebb and flow to our application process, and we, historically, August has been our high month for when our applications are filed, which is kind of interesting. But again, just showing the yellow is the 2000, that applications definitely July, August, September, much higher than they had been for the last three years, had a decline which is historical, occurs in the beginning of the winter months, the November and December. I don't have 2001 data with me, but I do know that 2001, it did start back up quite And again, just annualizing our intake applications, how many individuals are applying. '97, we had less than 8,400 applications, about 8,300. '98, a little less than 9,000 received for the year. '99, a little over 8,800. 2000, up to about 9,300. So intake applications are up. Our caseloads are going up. We have more families and individuals accessing our services through mainly our Medicaid programs. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Marion.
Yeah, Marion, I do have a question. How did, up here?
I'm sorry.
How's it look for the funding for the Medicaid programs? Will we continue to get funded as we have been?
I believe the state and the feds do cover the Medicaid costs. I know that the state budget, there's a lot of concern because of the rising Medicaid rolls and the costs associated there, and looking at cutting other departments and whatever in order to absorb those costs. The state expanded the programs greatly last July. They've simplified the process, so more people are able to access the programs, and they're going to need to find the money in order to continue to pay what they've put in place.
Well, that's what I'm concerned with. Will they be able to find the money, in your opinion? Does it look good? Mary Lou's over there shaking her head, yes, I'm hoping it will continue to look good, because I think it's absolutely necessary for people that don't have insurance.
I think what the state's going to do is take money out of the rainy day fund. They had close to a billion dollars in the rainy day fund, which is the money that the state saved by reducing the ADC caseload. So they're taking that, and they're bailing out Medicaid, they're bailing out childcare, and my understanding is that they're taking $100 million of that and putting it into education. So it doesn't look good as far as the funding that's coming to the counties. We're probably going to have to reduce our PRC program. We're not going to have the kind of dollars, we're looking at probably taking a $7 million reduction.
In what, in PRC programs?
Of PRC programs, and a million, well, that was 600, 6 million point eight in PRC programs, plus employment and training got a million dollars in another set of, another special pot of money that went through ETA. So if you look at the total loss, it'll be close to $7 million or more.
The loss will be that much for PRC?
Right.
Because they're transferring the money for different things?
Right. They're going to spend it on Medicaid, they're going to spend it on education, and they're going to spend it on childcare. We have probably over 2,000 kids in daycare in Lorraine County. We're spending probably $5 to $7 million on daycare.
Well, that's pretty obvious with the way they're coming through here to the daycare centers.
Right, you're passing on, that's just the centers. We also have in-home vendors. Someone can watch up to seven or six kids in their home, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Lou. I think that concludes our agenda, so I'll move adjourn.
One second.
Discussion. Mrs. Blair? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Vacy?
Aye. You never know.